Good evening. The thirty-second meeting of the seventy-third term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to members, press, and members of the public, we're asking all attendees to wear masks unless you're speaking. If you're speaking, you can take your mask off. And at this time, please take time out to turn any electronic devices off, and a minimum, put them on vibrate. As some of you know, today is Delta Day at City Hall. Unfortunately, not in person, not face-to-face, but they had an amazing virtual day earlier today. This afternoon, I had the honor of addressing the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Here to deliver this evening's invocation is their soror, Ms. Rosalyn Crosby. Ms. Crosby is the pastor of Adams Chapel AME Church, and is the chaplain for Delta Sigma Theta's Baltimore Alumni Chapter. Pastor Crosby, the floor is yours.
Let us all bow our heads to pray. Great and mighty God, we honor and lift up your master's name. We come asking for your blessings, your help, your guidance, asking most of all for your presence in this place right now. Lord God, we come humbly confessing to you that we need you. We need you, Lord. The city, the nation, and the world have gone gunshot, killing spree, disregarding life mad. So we need you, Lord, to continue strengthening us, teaching us, empowering us, empowering our mayor, our city council president, and the various levels of the city council and city officials. And all that are gathered here under my voice, lead and guide us, Lord God, and give us wisdom. Give us wisdom, Lord God. Give us wisdom, because in the midst of the messiness of our times, and the messiness of our city, and the messiness of our community, Lord, we ask you to increase the strength of those on this city council, our servant leaders, as they serve, as they work, as they help, Lord God, for the welfare and greater good of all in the city, on the north, the south, the east, and the west side. Direct our paths, Lord God, by your Spirit of community, by your Spirit of justice, your Spirit of peace and love. May we work in harmony and in the power of agreement, even if we disagree. Let us not grow weary in doing what is right and good for the fit and fitting for the city of Baltimore and its people. Let the people support our elected officials, help and encourage them, this city council and this city government. We ask that the agenda set for tonight, Lord God, the bills, the legislation, the ordinance, and the city council leaders report, Lord God, this evening. May they please you and let your name be glorified. May they benefit those who live, those who work, those who are being educated, those who are being provided health care, those who are being provided public work services, housing, and prison reform in this city. Lord God, touch each and every one of us with your grace, with your blessings, and touch each leader personally in their hearts, in their homes, and in their service of work. I pray this prayer in the most precious and holy and blessed and sacred name. I say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Crosby, for the invocation. At this time, we will state the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Madam Clerk, if you please, could call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found on the beginning of page two of the agenda. We'll now turn to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first nomination.
EA twenty-two dash zero-one-two-two, Amy M. McLean, member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
Thank you. That nomination's been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. We will now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first bill.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-three-five, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, for the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the city of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during the fiscal two thousand and twenty-three year. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a requirement via the charter. Every year, we have to approve these three bills that come through the committee. It's called the budget process, and this is the first of the three. This bill will be assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, two-three-six.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-three-six, Annual Property Tax Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-three, for the purpose of providing a tax for the use of the mayor and city council of Baltimore for the period July first, two thousand and twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and setting the semi-annual payment service charge for that period. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill's been assigned to Ways and Means as well.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-three-seven, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, for the purpose of approving the budget estimated to be needed for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for operating programs during fiscal two thousand and twenty-three, providing for certification of the approved budget to the state superintendent of schools, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill's been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, two-three-eight.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-three-eight, Charter Amendment Inspector General Advisory Board, for the purpose of altering the method by which individuals are selected to be members of the advisory board that appoints the inspector general, requiring a member of the city council to consider certain factors when nominating a candidate for the advisory board, setting term limits and staggering certain terms, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor, Ramos, Porter, Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to recognize the gentleman from the fourteenth district. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This resolution for a charter amendment does two things. It changes the composition of the office of the Inspector General Advisory Board so that no elected officials, their designees, city or state employees, lobbyists, or anyone doing business in the city or with the city is on the board. It is best practice among the office of inspector generals in other cities and states. As a matter of fact, out of the many jurisdictions with OIGs around the U.S., there are only seven jurisdictions with advisory boards, and of those, only two have elected officials or designees on their boards, including Baltimore City. So this charter amendment will make sure there is no perception of conflict of interest as we make sure that there are no elected officials, et cetera, on the board. The charter amendment also changes the selection process. Each one of us gets, the fourteen of us, gets to nominate one person from our districts. The nominees are placed into groups. Group one is districts one, two, and three. Group two is district four, five, and six, and so on. The chair of the Ethics Board will randomly select from one of these groupings, from each one of these groupings. The last two are randomly selected from names put forth by the Baltimore City Bar Association, the Association of Fraud Examiners, and the Association of Certified Public Accountants. I want to thank our colleagues who are currently serving on the advisory board. They have served admirably and spent a lot of time away from their constituents on this work. Colleagues, I welcome your feedback questions and your support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This bill's been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk? I'm sorry. Sorry, if we could let the record reflect that Chairman Conway would like to co-sponsor this bill. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-three-nine, Sale of Property, Two Thousand One Park Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property that is located at Two Thousand One Park Avenue, block thirty-four, forty-eight, lot thirty, and is no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill's been assigned to Ways and Means Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-four-zero, Sale of Property, Seven One One North Arlington Avenue, block one oh four, portion of lot sixty-two, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property located at Seven One One North Arlington Avenue, block one oh four, portion of lot sixty-two, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date.
This bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee.
Oh, sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
Thank you for that. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill twenty-two dash zero-two-four-one, Youth Football Presence of Emergency Medical Services, for the purpose of requiring a youth sports program to have emergency medical services personnel present at all youth football games in which youth athletes participate. Sponsor, President Mosby, Porter.
This bill's been assigned to Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. We'll now move to resolutions being introduced for the first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution twenty-two dash zero-one-zero-five-R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD seven license to a Class A seven license for use at twelve thirty-eight Greenmount Avenue, two-one-two-oh-two. For the purpose of providing the required approval under Maryland Code Annotation Alcohol Beverages twelve nine oh two, one D one, to allow the license holder holding a valid Class BD seven beer, wine, and liquor license issued for use at twelve thirty-eight Greenmount Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland, two-one-oh, two-one-two-oh-two, to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their Class BD seven beer, wine, and liquor license for a Class A seven beer, wine, and liquor license. Sponsor, Stokes.
This resolution has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk?
City Council Resolution twenty-two dash zero-one-zero-six-R, Investigational Hearing, Solar Farming, for the purpose of inviting representatives from We Solar, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Department of Planning's Office of Sustainability, the Department of General Services, the Comptroller, the City Administrator, the State Public Service Commission, and the Baltimore Gas and Electric Company to brief the city council on commercial and residential solar farming, and to assess how solar farming can benefit the citizens of Baltimore City. Sponsor, Burnett, Conway, Porter, Ramos, Bullock.
At this time, I would like to recognize the gentleman from the eighth district. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. As more and more jurisdictions shift their efforts towards clean energy, we must do the same. Jurisdictions across Maryland are investing in commercial and residential solar farming, and it's not just counties that are rich with agricultural landscapes, but jurisdictions like Baltimore County, Howard County, and Prince George's. We wanted to bring this investigational hearing to move Baltimore City in the right direction. There are so many opportunities for us to expand clean energy, reduce cost of energy for our residents, and generate revenue for the city from solar farming, like utilizing rooftops of city-owned buildings to house solar panels, or transforming city-owned vacant lots. We can also use this as a way to assist low-income families with opportunities to install solar panels and reduce their energy costs. Like, however, we are behind the curve and must catch up to our neighboring counties. Therefore, we are calling this hearing to get a better understanding of how to put Baltimore on path to clean energy. The state has taken action through SB five twenty-eight, the Climate Solutions Bill Act, which was signed into law that focuses on energy-efficient developments and providing significant investments for jurisdictions who are seeking to advance their efforts in clean energy, and also Baltimore City Delegate Commissioner-sponsored HB four forty, which would also expand community solar energy generating systems across the state of Maryland. Looking forward to a good discussion on this in committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I see the hand raised of, would you like to speak? Oh, just, please let the record reflect that Councilman Dorsey would like to be added to this bill, as well as Councilman Cohen, as well as Councilman Glover, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton. With that, this bill's been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Yeah. Madam Clerk, if we could go to the next resolution, one oh seven R.
City Council Resolution twenty-two dash zero-one-zero-seven-R, Informational Hearing, School Safety, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Public School System, the Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore City School Police, the Baltimore Fire Department, including the Emergency Medical Service EMS Division, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Office of the State's Attorney for Baltimore City, the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services, the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and the Community Action Partnership to brief the city council regarding safety in our schools, current safety measures, and future steps to take to keep our students and school staff safe. Sponsor, Stokes, Porter, Ramos, Bullock, Torrance, and McCray.
At this moment, I would like to recognize Chairman Stokes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the increase in violent crime throughout the city, it's no surprise that the disease of violence is spilling over into our schools. Recent news accounts of weapons found in one of our schools makes students and parents very fearful. Actually, it's fifteen. Parents, students, and staff should not be afraid, but they are. I'm calling for a hearing with the city agencies and partners tasked with the responsibility of keeping our students and staff safe. During the hearing, I don't only want to talk about, don't only want to hear about safety measures, but all the tools necessary for a comprehensive look at violence, interruption, and interventions that will keep everyone safe now and in the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any co-sponsors? I see the hearing of Chairman Conway, Vice President Middleton, Councilman Glover. This bill has been assigned to Education, Workforce, and Youth, one oh zero R.
City Council Resolution twenty-two dash zero-one-zero-eight-R, Investigative Hearing, Druid Lake and Ashburton Water Tanks, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Recreation and Parks, BCRP, and the Department of Public Works to provide information on the Druid Lake and Ashburton Water Tanks projects, including a general overview highlighting the importance of the projects, an updated timeline for the completion of the projects, a summary of the environmental implications of the projects, and any corrective actions taken on environmental issues reported to the Maryland Department of the Environment, an assessment of the scope of the projects and whether they are on track to stay within the allotted budget, a detailed description of the proposed park amenities and restoration, a discussion of BCRP's plan to maintain Druid Lake Park during the ongoing construction work, and an assessment of how these projects align with equitable neighborhood development for the surrounding communities. Sponsors, Torrance, Ramos, Bullock.
At this point, I would like to recognize gentlemen from the seventh district. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Honorable colleagues, I bring this resolution on behalf of the residents of the surrounding communities of both Ashburton, Halen Park, Reservoir Hill, Penn North, Woodbury. We have two major projects in our district, which account for $200 million of actual federal funds that allows us to protect our drinking water. On top of that, we are restoring a park. So I want to make sure that the public is aware of, we're on budget, we're on time, and we're going to deliver new amenities to our community, but we address environmental issues as we had them, and that there's a master plan that's coming for one of the parks, as well as new amenities for the additional park. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No additional co-sponsors. This resolution has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. On to one oh nine R.
City Council Resolution twenty-two dash zero-one-zero-nine-R, Request for City Action, Fund to Support Reproductive Health Care, for the purpose of inviting the mayor to work with the city council to create a public fund that supports community-based organizations in Baltimore that are engaged in reproductive health services. Sponsor, Cohen, Porter, Ramos, Bullock, Torrance, and McCray.
At this time, I would like to recognize the gentleman from the first district.
Thank you, Mr. President. The leaked memo that portends a future where Roe versus Wade is repealed is a direct assault on our civil liberties, in particular, our right to privacy. While we cannot change the hearts and minds of Supreme Court justices, we will not allow them to take away our voice and choice here in Baltimore. Today, Councilmember Porter and I are proud to introduce a resolution calling on Mayor Scott to work with us to create a fund to support reproductive health. We will help community-based organizations that are already doing the work expand their capacity to provide transportation, lodging, and other services for folks that either need an abortion or any other type of reproductive health services. The people that the Supreme Court's decision will most harm are struggling to get by in systems that weren't built for them. They come from places where maternal mortality rates far exceed the national average. They come from the coal country and the rust belt and the Bible Belt. They are black and brown. Black women are three-point-five times more likely to die during childbirth than white women are. There are trans and non-binary Americans whose identities are already marginalized and too often erased. The Supreme Court has found yet another way to punish the poor and reinforce the patriarchy, and I would note that in states like Michigan, it may be considered a felony to get an abortion. In this moment of national regression, as our basic rights are peeled away one by one, our city stands in solidarity with oppressed people from around the world. I thank you, Mr. President, and is it possible to yield from my colleague from the tenth district?
Yes.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
This is an opportunity for Baltimore City and those advocating for health care for all to be a leader and catalyst for all women, no matter of race, sexual orientation, or immigration status. This recent Supreme Court decision divides states across this country, introducing numerous restrictions on reproductive health care for women, cutting off women from some of, cutting off women from one of their only health care providers that they may have. In a city where more than fifty percent of the population is women, we need to prioritize women beyond these specific issues. We need to keep working to support women and families in other ways, by getting incomes rising, including the minimum wage, which disproportionately affects women. We need to finally guarantee equal pay for women's work, and as you can imagine, these issues have longstanding generational effects. For some women, this is a matter of life and death. I look forward to the support of my colleagues, and I encourage you to support this resolution to not only guarantee abortion rights, but also expand it to women's health and reproductive access as well for all.
The gentleman from the first district?
Thank you, Mr. President. I waive the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, rules will be suspended. You guys want to be added a co-sponsor before we vote it in? That's fine. Please, everybody raise your hand. Who would like to be? If we could let the record reflect that from co-sponsors, we have Councilman Dorsey, Chairman Conway, Vice President Middleton, Councilman Burnett, Chairman Stokes, Chairman Costello, and Councilman Glover. At this point, gentleman from the first district, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Waive the rules for immediate adoption.
Without any objection, we will suspend the rules. At this point, the rules are suspended. Mister, gentleman from the first district?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen.
Yes.
McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. Thank you. You can find the consent calendar in section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the calendar is now approved. We will now move the bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be on short titles for remainder of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are on short titles. First committee we're going to go to is Economic and Community Development. Madam Clerk?
Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-one-R, Investigative Hearing, Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
At this time, I'd like to recognize the Vice President of the Council, Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-one-R, this bill was heard on February second, two thousand and twenty-one, and May third, two thousand and twenty-two. At the hearing, representatives from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund presented information from the two thousand and twenty-one annual report, which is posted on the city council's Legistar website. The report indicated that funding has been provided for certain activities, which include affordable housing development, community land trusts, and senior home repairs. It is understood that two thousand and twenty-one is the first year the fund has reported. We look forward to reviewing future reports and hope that committee suggestions will be included. I move the bill as favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Madam Clerk?
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero-zero-four-seven, Charter Amendment, Dante Barksdale Career Technology Apprenticeship Fund.
At this time, I'd like to recognize the Vice President of the Council, Ms. Sharon Green Middleton.
Were you anticipating what was being said?
No. Yeah, we moved on.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're right.
We'll come back to it.
It ran into it. At this time, I'd like to recognize Chairman Stokes. Sorry I got you confused with Vice President Middleton.
That's because I have a tie on, Mr. President.
If, if you know Chairman Stokes, you understood that joke. You look good in your tie, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing on April the seventh and a work session on May the fifth. Before I move the amendment, Mr. President, you ought to sponsor this amendment. Did you have a few words you wanted to say?
Sure. I appreciate that. Thank you. This was a bill that received a lot of support throughout the council. It provides apprenticeship opportunities and a new fund to ensure that we're providing career mobility for our young folks. As you know, automation is going to continue to take hold. A lot of the low-skill, low-wage jobs that many of our young folks are able to get into to kind of sustain a lifestyle of living in our city are going away every single week. So this provides real opportunity of connecting them with STEM as other vocational opportunities to ensure that they have a leg up on the job market and they can be properly prepared for the jobs of the future. I appreciate every single member of the council who sponsored this bill. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
There should be amendment on all council members' desks. I move the amendment.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it.
I move the bill favorable as amended. The bill's approved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill passes as amended. Madam Clerk?
The next two are also Education, Workforce.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just go there.
Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero-zero-five-six-R, From Front Door to Schoolhouse Door.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing December the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and a voting session on May the fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. I move the resolution favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The resolution is approved. Madam Clerk?
Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero-zero-nine-eight-R, Upkeep and Maintenance of Vacant Lots and Public Green Spaces.
At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing on May the fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. I move the resolution favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This resolution is adopted. We're going to move now to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, twenty-one dash zero-zero-nine-four.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero-zero-nine-four, Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Establishment, the Hometown Heroes Act.
At this point, we'd like to call on Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. It was sponsored by Councilmember Christopher Net, and the committee approved this bill as favorable with amendments. The amendments are the council members' desks, and I move the committee amendments.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded for us to adopt the amendments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay.
I moved the bill...
The amendments are adopted.
I moved the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and properly seconded as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill is approved as amended.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero-one-nine-one, Homeless Shelters and Transitional Housing Units, Human Trafficking Notice Requirements.
At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Conway.
That's one of you. That's one of you.
I'm sorry. Conway.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Christopher Net. The committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments, and the amendments are on the council members' desks. I move the committee amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair?
I moved the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The bill is approved and will be printed for third reader. We're going to move on to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk, EA 22-0114.
EA 22-0114, Burke Attila, Director, Department of General Services.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held a hearing on May 12th, and we heard seven executive appointments, and so I'd like to move this nomination favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Chair.
EA 22-0115, Aloma Buoma, Member, Mayor's Commission on Disabilities.
Got ahead of you. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I'd like to move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0116, Sarah Langmead, Member, Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Mr. Chair.
I'd like to move the nomination favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0117, the Honorable Zakiya Massa, Member, Employee Retirement Systems Board of Trustees.
Mr. Chair.
I'd like to move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0119, Kevin Cleary, Member, Environmental Control Board.
Mr. Chair.
I'd like to move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This nomination is approved.
EA 22-0120, London Smith de Richelieu, Director, LGBTQ Affairs.
Mr. Chair.
I'd like to move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This nomination is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA 22-0121, Garrett Power, Member, Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation.
Mr. Chair.
I'd like to move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This nomination is approved. We're going to move on to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, 22-0193.
Council Bill 22-0193, Real Property Tax Credit for Energy Conservation Devices.
At this time, I'd like to recognize the Chair of the Committee, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's amendments on my colleagues' desks. I move the amendments.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the bill favorably as amended.
It's been moved and properly seconded to move the bill favorably as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is approved and will be printed for third reader. Madam Clerk.
Council Bill 22-0209, Sale of Property, 620 North Caroline Street.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. Now, we're going to turn up to third reading for final passage. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the only bill on third reading for tonight.
22-0194, Charles Village Community Benefits District and Management Authority. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now, we're going to turn to committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear a committee call, please stand and provide any announcements to the body. At this point, first up, we're going to have, we're going to hear from our Vice President, Madam Sharon Green Middleton. Sorry about that. Economic Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee would like to announce the following hearings, which will be held in person in council chambers here at City Hall, June 14th, 2022. I move for suspension of the rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing for a bill.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, we will suspend 10-2 and 10-3. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
On June 14th, 2022, at 2:02 PM, we will hear City Council Bill 21-0105R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class B D7 License to a Class A7 License for Use at 1238 Greymont Avenue, 21202. Sponsor, Councilman Stokes. And then on June 21, 2022, at 2:00 PM, we will hear City Council Bill 22-0188, Rezoning 3101 to 3113 Eastern Avenue again. And this is Councilman Cohen's district.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, we're going to hear from Education Workforce and Youth. Mr. Chair from the 12th District, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Education Workforce and Youth is holding a hearing Thursday, June 9th, 2022, Bill Number 22-022, Fire and Police Employees Retirement Systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Health, Environment, and Technology. Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, Public Safety Government Operations. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got three announcements. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear Bill 22-0088R, an information hearing on a CSX Coal Silo Explosion, on Wednesday, June 15th, 2022, at 1:00 PM in council chambers at the request of Councilmember Felicia Porter. The committee will also be meeting to hear Bill LO 21-0006, A Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan, on Wednesday, June 29th, 2022, at 1:00 PM in council chambers. The committee will also hear LO 21-0006 on Wednesday, September 28th, 2022, at 1:00 PM in council chambers. This is, once again, the Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan, sponsored by myself. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to hear from Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to suspend the appropriate rules in order to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, rules 10-2 and 10-3 are suspended.
The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hear Bill Number 22-0234 in three different hearings. The first one is for this Wednesday, May 18th, at 5:00 PM. We'll hear that same bill again on May 25th at 1:00 PM, and again on June 8th at 1:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman Conway, do you want to provide context at this point, or?
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, this bill that Chairman Schleifer just announced is the Police Accountability Board, and we are looking to hold at the very least three hearings in order to move it through. We want to make sure we get as much feedback from the public as possible. We are a little bit under the gun. We have to complete the bill by July 1st in order to meet the state mandate. So I want to thank Chairman Schleifer for making sure that we can try and squeeze it in. We do have a little bit of time on the back end, but we want to make sure that we give as much time as possible, given this is a short turnaround. So we'll have three hearings. The first will be an evening hearing so that folks can make it after work. All will have an opportunity for public testimony, but the big piece here is to make sure that we have an appropriate feedback from the community. So thank you, Mr. President. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And last and certainly not least, Ways and Means. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to suspend the rules to announce a hearing, specifically Rule 10-3.
Without objection, Rule 10-3 is suspended. Hearing and seeing none, it's suspended. The floor is yours, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee will hold hearings on Council Bill 22-0235, Ordinance of Estimates for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2023. There is a schedule that I've placed on our members' desks. Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend rules to announce a hearing, specifically Rule 10-3.
Without objection, Rule 10-3 is suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rule is suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding Council Bill 22-0236, Annual Property Tax Fiscal Year 2023. First, I should note that Baltimore City's constant yield tax rate was, in fact, advertised in the Baltimore Sun Newspaper on Saturday, May 14th, 2022. This bill will lead to what is also referred to as City Council Taxpayers' Night. Taxpayers' Night provides residents of Baltimore City the unique opportunity to share comments and concerns about the city's budget. This hearing will be on Thursday, May 26th, at 6:00 PM, and it will be in the Board of Estimates Room on the second floor in City Hall. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules to announce a hearing, specifically Rule 10-3.
Without objection, Rule 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none is suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor and City Council Resolution 22-0237, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2023. We will hold hearings on this on Thursday, May 26th, at 3:01 PM. That will be an overview of their budget with the CFO, and an in-depth hearing on Thursday, June 2nd, at 6:30 PM that will be with the Chair of the Board and the CEO, Dr. Santa Leesas. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules to announce a hearing, specifically Rules 10-2 and 10-3.
Without objection, Rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, May 26th, at 2:58 PM on Council Bill 22-0239, that's Sale of Property, 2001 Park Avenue. Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules to announce a hearing, specifically Rules 10-2 and 10-3.
Without objections, Rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, May 26th, at 2:59 PM. Council Bill 22-0240, Sale of Property, 711 North Arlington Avenue, Block 0104, portion of a lot, 062. Finally, Mr. President, on City Council Ways and Means Committee Budget Hearings, the hearings will start at 3:00 PM on Thursday, May 26th. Again, there's a schedule on our colleagues' desks. That will be a budget overview with BBMR and Baltimore City Public School System that will be in city council chambers. Later that evening at 6:00 PM will be the opportunity for public testimony. That will be Baltimore City Council Taxpayers' Night, as I mentioned, and that will be in the Board of Estimates Room because that will be a hybrid format hearing with both in-person and virtual testimony. The only room that is capable of that at this time in City Hall is the Board of Estimates Room on the second floor. So that's why we will be there. And then if you turn to the back of the schedule on your desks, you will see the six-day schedule. This is a slight change from five days in the past. This is to accommodate requests from members on additional items, specifically a more in-depth look at the capital budget as well as the ARPA spend. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we're going to go to regular announcements. Please raise your hand for any regular announcements. I see the hand raised from Councilman Dorsey. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge my chief of staff of more than five years, Corey Page. Was married a couple weeks ago, and I give my greatest wishes to him. And to his wonderful bride, Brianna. I also want to acknowledge it's Bike to Work Week. I biked here today, and back in March, I finished biking literally every block of every street in the entire city of Baltimore, 1,600 miles. You can literally bike everywhere in the city of Baltimore, and I encourage everybody to get on a bike if you can. Maybe you've never done it before. Bring yourself to work on a bike. Bring yourself to a community association meeting on a bike. Bring yourself to dinner in your neighborhood or another neighborhood, or wherever you got to go. You know, try to get on a bike sometime this week, at least as some sort of catalyst for a new experience. You'll thank yourself. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional announcements? Hearing and seeing none, we will move. At this point, I'd like to recognize, I'm sorry, Chairman Conway.
Mr. President, I just want to acknowledge one of the selfless advocates in my community, Precious Praline. She's really a leader, and unfortunately, she passed a week ago. People in the community loved her. She really helped people who were struggling with addiction. She was a survivor of addiction, clean for a number of years, and really helped a lot of people deal with addiction along the way, and I just want to have an opportunity to acknowledge her tonight for her service and her joyous life. So thank you.
Thank you. And how we're not in New York, the citizens of Baltimore, and definitely this body of the city council, stand with the community up in Buffalo for the grave and horrific act that took place in that supermarket. We understand and know that situations like that are far too common for individuals who carried out such a horrific act. So as we close out, let's please ensure that we keep in our hearts and minds the community of Buffalo and all that they're going through right now. At this point, I'd like to recognize Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would also like to add Mr. Ronald Hayes to the Moment of Silence list. He was a way over 40-plus-years DPW worker, public servant. He also, at one time, served as the Sergeant of Arms for the city council, and he passed away suddenly a week or so ago. So continue to keep his family in prayer. And at this time, the next city council meeting will be held on Monday, May 23rd, 2022, at 5:00 PM here in council chambers. And may we have a moment of silence for Precious Praline, Ronald Hayes, the now 125 victims of homicide, and also prayers for the families throughout the United States on just the terrible gun violence that not only our city but our entire country is suffering from. And may we continue to have prayers for the families that are going through this terrible gun violence.
Thank you.